Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Ken Dami and I am the Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the Greater Concord Chamber. Today, I would like to welcome all of you in the audience, our candidates. We are going to be taping this program for use back on your local station. Before we get started, just a couple acknowledgements. The Chamber is proud to be hosting this event. Tassoral Golden Eagle Refinery is proud to be a sponsor of the event. The Chamber, this year, is celebrating 75 years of history here in Concord. And we will have several programs throughout the year that we hope you join us in celebrating that accomplishment. At each seat, you'll notice that there's an index card and a pen. So throughout the program, we encourage you to write any questions down if you feel that there's one that we're not asking. And at the end of the program, we will ask those questions time allotted. If we're unable to get to all the questions, we will give the candidates those questions and ask them to respond to them, and we will post those up on the Chamber's site at a later date. This morning, some house rules here, candidates. So this morning, each candidate, we will start with, we will go down one row, starting with Suzanne and ending with Tim, and then the next question, we will ask Tim and come down, ending with Suzanne. Each question will be allotted for a two-minute response. About 20 seconds into responding to the question, when time is running out, Judy Malley will hold up a yellow card. Oh, about a one minute, I'm sorry, one minute. So Judy is right there in the front row, you can't miss her. She has a 20-second yellow card. And then the red card is when we would like you to conclude as quickly as possible if you're going over your time, so that we could keep the program going, because we do have a lot of great questions to ask. With that, are there any questions from the candidates? No? Okay, let's get started, then. I will introduce each one of you simply by name. The first question is going to let you talk about yourselves a little bit more detailed in terms of what makes you a credible candidate for the position. So, starting here, on my right, is Suzanne Davis-Luce. Next to her is Ed Burson, Carol Longshore, followed by Dan Helix, Marnie Sheehan-Carter, Terry Kremen, Vernon Kurpiski, Harmesh Kumar, and then, of course, Tim McGallion on our end. So with the first question, Suzanne, what in your background training and experience qualifies you to set policy and direction for the city of Concord?
I have been a Contra Costa County Health Services employee for the last 12 years, and I have served on the Concord City Commission for Aging and the Contra Costa Council for Aging for the Social Services Department. My investigative skills are very important for the city of Concord to try to decide what are going to be the needs of our city, and I believe that with my experience as a licensed therapist in the state of California, my skills in doing budgeting and helping individuals with their estates, that I have the skills that will help support the city of Concord going forward.
Okay. Ed, thank you. Same question.
For the last four years at least, I've attended nearly all the city council meetings and have spoken at many of them. You can see my positions on YouTube. I've been intimately involved in our community on both political and community levels. I'm on several nonprofits, taking care of children, working for the seniors, working for the uninsured. I've been involved at all the neighborhoods, whether it be helping in Sun Terrace to get their flyers out and doing their manning their dumpster days. I'm the president of the library, I've been tripled the donations to the library. I've been on enough boards and volunteers and actually hit the streets for years. There's no area of the city that doesn't know me in my volunteer work. And that gives me a perspective from the community and from the neighborhoods to help lead, and I have a proven record of both of experience and action throughout the city.
Thank you. Carol, same question. If you'd like the question at any point repeated, please just indicate so.
Okay. I'm Carol Longshore, and it's the first time I've run, first, oh, well, I did run 30 years ago, but that was different circumstances, yeah. As far as policy procedure, I've been involved with the Historical Society for eight years on their board, and before that, I've been on a PTA board and been volunteering for years in the city in many ways. This is a step up for me. It's been a very wonderful learning experience so far, running with these candidates. I feel what I can bring to the city is possibly a new look at policy procedure, bringing kind of a fresh thought to some of the issues that are going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Actually, Carol, I ran more than 30 years ago. And I was elected twice, served eight years, two years as mayor, and then went back in the Army for a spell. But during the time that I was on the council before, I also served as a BART director, and this is at a time when you could serve in both positions. And I was very pleased to get an editorial from the Contra Costa Times saying that Dan Helix put BART back on the tracks. They had a stumbling start, and they needed someone to kind of shine the light of public attention on things that were going on, and that's what I did. I have recently concluded just about my second year after being appointed to fill Mark Peterson's unexpired term after he was elected as the district attorney. My interest had to do with the Concord Pavilion, and we'll talk more about that later. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Marnie?
Good morning. I'm Marnie Sheehan-Carter, and what qualifies me is I am a member of this community. I am a mother of five children in this community, a sixth-generation Californian, and the daughter of a former mayor of the city of Concord. In my professional experience, I have worked as a paralegal and legal educator, as well as a business manager for large corporations, looking at setting policies and procedures along with information governance and data compliance. As a mother and also a member of this community, I look at the fact that our children are part of our future workforce here in Concord, and I look at the fact that our small business owners need a voice with our city government, and I want to work towards marrying that partnership and towards our future.
Thank you. Terry?
Good morning, Terry Kremen. The biggest thing I think I bring is troubleshooting. My career is both as an aircraft mechanic and as a scientist. My job has always been to take in all of the available information, come out with logical, reasoned answers. I think that's something we really need to do and more of, especially moving forward. We have so many newer situations that occur constantly, that we can't always fall back on the past, but we have to look to the future and make good, sound decisions that are going to last for the length of the city. Like I said, with my backgrounds being more troubleshooting, like I said, both brains and airplanes, complex systems, so I'm used to looking at a large amount of information, a large amount of details, assimilating all that information, and coming up with a reasoned and rationed answer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vernon Kurpiski. One of the reasons why I think I would make a good city councilman is I've been in the customer service industry for 35 years. I've had to deal with the public, I've had to deal with people that, at times, were upset, didn't feel that their words were being heard, and I think in the 35 years, I've learned to listen to all the sides, make a good, calm decision, and try to diffuse some of the stuff that some people are feeling cheated or don't feel that is going their way. I try to listen to them and make sure that they feel their voices are being heard.
Thank you. Harmesh?
You know, I'm Dr. Harmesh Kumar. I'm a psychologist for the last 27 years, 22 years of that in Concord. I have served as a chair and commissioner on the Humor Relation Commission, and now I'm serving on Mayor Q Committee. And I have listened to so many problems and so many suffering from people of Concord for the last 22 years. And being psychologist, I also run some business. I started nonprofit, created 30 jobs here in Concord and also in Fremont area. And also, I have 60 jobs created in the Central Valley in my business, assisted living in nursing home. There is so much we need to do in our city. We're spending our resources on things which are non-functional and non-benefiting the public. So my role as a city council, future city council member, would be to bring the services to people so that we don't see any veterans homeless, we don't see any homeless person in a downtown area. And businesses feel good, and we all feel good, and we all create a better life for all of us.
Thank you. Tim?
Okay, thank you. Well, I would like to start by thanking the Chamber for hosting this. It's definitely a lot different being on this side. Two years ago, I was the moderator, and so now we have a little different change of pace. Some of my qualifications and my background is, early on, I actually did work for the California State Legislature, being involved in watching how policy was made and what it takes in order to make sure that the government is working for us in a good way. The other thing that I now bring to the table is, as a small business owner at one time, working in the Concord community very closely. I am currently the vice chairman of the Board of Directors for the Concord Chamber. I am the vice chairman of the Planning Commission here in Concord. And I've been involved in a number of other activities, being the president of the Kiwanis Club, very involved in helping the community, helping different schools in our area, and being someone who's taken an active role in this community to make sure that we understand what are the needs. And as someone with a young family, I understand that, you know, there's so much more to working on policy, making sure we're putting our families first here in Concord.
Thank you. Now, Tim, this question is going to start with you, and then come back, work its way back down, and end with Suzanne. So the question is, Tim, what do you see as the two most important issues you must face immediately, and how will you plan to address those issues?
So I think immediately, the number one thing that I'm seeing is the economic development in Concord needs help. I'm very concerned with the fact that because of the loss of redevelopment, we've had to cut back our Economic Development Department. And so when you've got, you know, one person who's trying to take on the marketing promotion and trying to make sure that Concord still is a viable city, I think that's something that as a city council member, you know, I can be that person to help step in, work closely with our Economic Development Department, with our chamber, and being able to go out and create and retain jobs. And that's something that, you know, when you have over a million square feet of office space that needs to get filled, we need to really get out there and get the red, roll the red carpet out, make sure we're making it as business-friendly as it is possible to be able to do business here in Concord. The other thing is, I do feel that we do need to look at some of our expenses. I know it's been a very hot topic in terms of medical coverages for city council members, and I think that's something that I think we should address and something that we're going to talk about if I'm elected.
Thank you. Harmesh?
You know, we have been talking about that city doesn't have the budget. Grant leaders and city leaders always feel helpless and hopeless that the state is taking away all our money. We need to have creative ways to deal with two major issues right now, jobs in the city of Concord and development of small business. And we have a golden opportunity to do something in the immediate future on our Concord Naval Weapons Station. I would like to see, like President Obama said, manufacturing job here in our city. We have a beautiful place, and it's already there, and I would also like to see how we spend our 60% of the budget on the police department, and still, we don't feel safe according to the police report, a bit cheap, presented to us. Two rapes in a month in the city of Concord, this is not safety, I see. We need to create more safety. We have the funds available, but they are not being spent in the right way.
Okay, thank you. Vernon?
Now, the first thing I would like to do is make sure that our gateways into the city are well-represented, so the first thing people see when they come to the city is a city that they would want to move to, invest in, and feel really comfortable in. The other thing is, speaking of the weapons station, I think that one thing we should do as Concord is build a sports facility out there, because when you build a sports facility and you make it a really nice one, you can put on these tournaments that bring in at least 50 teams for a soccer game, softball game, even the volleyball matches. When you times that you have, you bring in 50 families who are bringing all, that are going to need to stay in hotels, shop. So I think that that would be one of the main things, we make sure we put a really quality sports facility out there.
Thank you. Terry?
Great, thank you. Definitely, we've already talked on, or touched on jobs. It's definitely one of my first priorities. For businesses, you have to have people with money to spend. If you just keep making more stores, all that happens is the available money gets spread out. One of the things I would really like to see us do is bring in some biotech into this area. We live in the bio capital world, our capital of the world, basically, yet we don't actively recruit, or we haven't been able to actively recruit. I think that's something I bring is, I've actually worked in biotech, you know, I've worked in labs, so I bring that experience and would like to focus on trying to coordinate or trying to recruit more of that, including just to the Bank of America. We don't need to wait for the weapons station. The other one being also families, family safety. Why don't we have crosswalks anywhere on the schools? I mean, does it really cost us that much to paint those? Or, you know, I brought it up four years ago, and said, oh, we're going to repave those sections, so four years just to get crosswalks for kids and families to walk? So that would be one of my big issues, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie?
So the two immediate needs that I can see that can be addressed is that we have done a good job as a city in a time of great economic crisis for a lot of cities, and we should be continuing that good work. And one of the things that we can do better is soliciting new ideas for, as many have already mentioned, continued economic growth in terms of job creation. But a lot of that comes between a partnership between the city and business owners. It's disheartening to hear many of my friends are small business owners in this community, and in talking with them, many of them don't even know who's on our city council, who's involved in our community leadership. There's a huge disconnect, and they don't feel that city leaders have reached out to them, come into their businesses. And so we need to find creative ways. I think the city is doing some good things. There's an ideas forum coming up to solicit input, and I think we need more of those in terms of getting individuals together. I think the Concord Patch does a great job at highlighting new businesses, but that needs to be broadcast really about what's going on. And the final issue I would talk about is dealing with some of the homeless issues that are downtown, because that's affecting some of our businesses and their ability to be successful.
I think the most immediate thing that we need to do is what we're working on right now in the city of Concord, a proactive action plan, which is called Destination Concord. And the plan proposes to leverage existing resources, partner with key stakeholders, and look at new and innovative approaches to generating economic development. The loss of the redevelopment agency hurt us a lot, but John Montag, who was our redevelopment director, is staying on. He and the staff has developed 10 key initiatives that we can use to help generate business in Concord. There's a variety of things that will be done, and we're going to be talking about this tomorrow night at the development meeting. The mayor and I are on that committee, and we look forward to your attendance and participation. Time to stop. Thank you.
The two most important issues for me are, first of all, keeping up. I do believe that the city's done a really, a very good job in the Toto Santos area. Working, I'd like to see us work with the schools a little bit more. We're creating with the Historical Society, we're creating a program for third graders, so they're going to be able to come through the Galindo House, and once we get a museum, they'll be able to do that, too, so it's going to be integrated into the school district, which I would really like to see a lot more of that. I would really like to work on understanding the Pavilion a lot more, being that we've been around long enough to see it begin and grow and then kind of hurt, so I'd like to put some attention to that. Thank you.
As the question was, what can be done immediately? These are a couple of things that can do immediately that begins to open up the greater good for the city. One is an area of leadership. The city council needs to be reminded that lifetime medical for five years service is unacceptable. I would introduce a measure to end it. As far as medical coverage for the city council itself, as a part-time position, this city does not provide medical coverage for any part-time employee. The person who picks up glass at Toto Santos as a seasonal employee has probably a greater right and need for medical coverage than we have suffering from paper cuts on the council. So that establishes leadership right away from the top. Once you have that, then, as a second measure, I would move to reinforce the safety of our city by innovative ways, not just by more sworn police officers. I would double the gang fighting side, including officers at the, CSO officers at the schools, and doubling the size of the graffiti removal. Both of these combined with opening up our sub-police stations will allow for greater home values and safety and a strategy to begin to take back our city. Thank you.
One of the first things that I've already started to do and would continue to do would be to address the needs of the Concord Pavilion. I've made it known, as a vice president of the Canyon Creek Homeowners Association, which is directly across the street from the Pavilion, that there are a number of issues going on over there that have been neglected, and I've spoken to our new Public Works Director, Justin Azell, and let him know that I look forward to working with him in removing some of the debris in the trees that are making it a flood risk, and also to continue to look at valuable ways of making it an income-producing revenue for our city of Concord. The second thing that I would address is I'm very concerned about the way that our officers are being treated, and especially now that they've raised the age to 57 for retirement. That is not acceptable to me. I think our safety officers have worked hard to keep our city safe, and they should not be going out the door for retirement in condition that is not acceptable. They need to have more support.
Okay, thank you. Now Suzanne, this one's going to start with you, and it follows the last one. What have you done, or what would you do, to make a difference if you had to pick one single thing, in the economic health in Concord?
I have contacted several owners of some of the gas stations that are along the Clayton Valley Road, and as some of you may be aware, a number of them are closing. And when I addressed the issue with the owner, they were saying that because the state and the county have certain requirements or regulations now that they are going to implement in these gas stations, they are now fining the owners of these gas stations, and the county is coming after them for all kinds of penalties. And I think as a city council person and with my history of working for Contra Costa, I could help partner with them, with banks, to help them get the funds to be able to do the restoration, do the upgrades that are necessary to keep them a valuable small business in our city of Concord.
Ed, thank you.
I am a small business person, owner in Concord for the last 26 years. Prior to that, I worked in a corporate level all over the world. When I have fought for the businesses here, I have gone before the Planning Commission to remind them of my position, that a permit should be issued for a variance on a law, not as a requirement to follow it. We have too many permit fees that are administrative and should not be done. I'd much rather have the person out there cleaning up the streets, manning the sidewalks, than having them rubber stamping an approval at a council, or at a regulation. We need to get businesses out from being the target of code enforcement. We need code enforcement to concentrate on blight and safety issues first, rather than arguing about people who have a little sign too big. We need to remove our sign ordinances so that people who transfer their business titles can keep the signs without having to file more fees. These things, I have spoken before the council, you can see it in the records, you can see it on my YouTube channel, and these are the things I continue to fight for. Thank you.
My main issue is going to have to be moving along the historical museum, the Galindo House, and trying to ease up on some of the red tape for getting this city a museum. It's the biggest city in the valley, and it doesn't have one, and we've been working on it for a long time, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to help scoot it along, especially with the project manager being a retired city planner for 39 years and very reputable in what he's doing. So that would be my main goal.
What I've done to help things move along, I served in 2004 on the Governor's Committee, which ensured that Concord would get the Naval Weapons Station. Since that time, I also co-chaired the Citizens Committee for two and a half years on the development of a plan. I think that that's one of the proudest things I've done, because we had the entire community of Concord involved in a number of Saturday sessions to develop a plan, which went from 15 plans down to five and down to three, and I think gave the city of Concord a very patent process, and we're going to continue to work on that, and two minutes is not very long. I see my time. Okay. Anyway.
You're right. It isn't very long.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're about halfway through the questions and followed by the closing remarks from each of our candidates, so I just wanted to take a moment to remind everybody that if there is a question you would like to ask from the audience, please write that down, the index card, and we will have somebody from the Chamber come around shortly and collect those cards. Our next, oh, please continue.
Thank you. In terms of economic growth, and I finished, I got rushed a little bit because we only have a minute, is what I was talking about earlier is there needs to be more visibility about the businesses that do exist in our community. It is disheartening to hear it time and time again from those that are investing dollars that they rent and live here in the community, and we should be changing them from renters into owners. But many times, that is not occurring because there, I think there's more, they look at something like Walnut Creek, where they see there's been a really good downtown development in terms of advertising those businesses, or we see major corporations moving partnerships out to somewhere like Pleasanton. I think we need to continue to broadcast what is here in Concord, and that visibility is not where it needs to be. If you go onto the city website, many times, there's not advertisements in terms of marketing of our businesses and working with them collaboratively to bring that visibility to the businesses that exist here currently.
Great, thank you. I think one of the first things I would do is actively is actually go visit some friends. So I know people in almost all of the major pharmaceutical manufacturing in this area. I know a lot of people at the small startups. My biggest role, I think, would be definitely at first of go and start selling Concord. We need to get good-paying jobs into the city, and it's, like I said, not to beat a dead horse on this one. a dead horse on this one, but just that we need to be actively recruiting these companies and these businesses, showing them what we have, going out and talking in a language they understand from somebody that's worked in labs before with them, and really bring in some good quality jobs, especially with our locations near BART, really, especially the Bank of America buildings. We should be getting some smaller biotech in right now, and that would be one of my first goals.
One of, one of the first things I would do is, a lot's been said about the homeless people that are kind of wandering the streets here, that the first thing I'd do is go to the City Manager and the Police Chief and talk to them and that, you know, try to find out what, what can be done about that, because it is a hardship on a lot of the small businesses around Concord. I've, I've been in the store, at some of the stores where they're talking about, oh, they're right around the corner, what are we going to do? We have to call the police. Something should be done with that, and it's a hard problem. It's, it's something that, it's going to take a lot of thought, so it's going to have to be done with the City Manager, the Police Chief, and whoever else in the city that could get involved and come up with ideas. And that'd be something that the public could help out with, and come up with ideas on what to do about it, because we just don't want to take them to the city limits and kick them out. They should be taken care of, so I don't know how to do it, and hopefully, as a community, we can figure it out.
No, I think this is one of my major focus with this homelessness, because I know how to do these things. I have been doing it. We have to have a transitional housing. The money we're spending transporting them from place to place, and they're coming back. It doesn't serve anybody. So we need to have a transitional housing and rehab services for them. And second thing, what I would do, as we all know Mark Twain said in the earlier days, that you have to be running to be stationary, and we have to compete globally to bring business to Concord. And we have a golden opportunity with Concord Naval Weapons Station. I would go and ask for E V five funding, which international financiers and corporations are investing in, in the United States. We have a lot of money coming from China, from Brazil, from India. I would bring those funds to the city of Concord. I have talked to the mayor already about this. So these are the kind of things, innovative things, we need to do to bring really diverse community and diverse funding and diverse businesses to the local community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to kind of refocus back to the question of what I've actually done to help economic development here in the city of Concord. And one of the big things is that as a Planning Commissioner, we updated the Development Code that hasn't been touched since the 1950s. So that made it a much easier for businesses to navigate and be able to operate their businesses, and it's created a more business-friendly environment. And so now that it's been, now that those pieces have been implemented, it should be much easier for people to be able to do business here in Concord. That's just one small step. There's so many others we have to work on. Another thing, as the Chairman of the Government Affairs and Economic Policy Committee here at the Chamber, we actually worked on a policy to encourage the city to do a better job working on procurement, so that they're trying to look more locally to be able to get the goods and services that they buy, and give those local businesses an opportunity to bid, and even give them an advantage, because they're the ones that are paying the taxes. Those people live here and they support our current economy, and let's not go out of state or overseas to purchase products that should be done right here in town, because that's how we build a strong economy here in Concord. The last one is, is I've actually been very integral part of trying to establish Tourism Business Improvement District, and that was something early on that we worked with, not only to Hilton, but we also worked with-
Tim, we're over time, but yours is going to be relevant here in a minute, as you'll find out, so.
Sure.
Just hold on. So Tim, this question begins with you.
Okay.
And will work its way down to Suzanne. Where do you stand on the use of T-bids, Tourism Business Improvement District, and P-bids, Property Business Improvement District, and why?
Honestly, I had no idea we were going to go there, but all right. No, I, I'm in huge support of it. I think that if implemented properly, it's a very, very effective way in order to basically put Concord on the map. It's something that, I know that we've had discussions with the Crown Plaza, with the Hilton, and, you know, there are 12 hotels here in Concord that I think that if, if done properly is something that will definitely help our city. And what it does is it not only puts us on the map, but it helps support the other businesses, the other programs such as Music in the Park, such as our Farmers Markets, and all the other activities that go on here in Concord. The nice part is, is unlike the P-bid that's going on for the businesses around Totos Santos, this is something that actually can be implemented much quicker, because we don't have to use the county as the taxing authority to collect the monies. This is something that the individual businesses can do. Monies can be collected much faster, and we can see a quicker return on our investment to be able to get the ball rolling much, much quicker than before.
Thank you.
You know, this, I think this is, personally speaking, this is the indirect way of kind of filling the gaps in the city budget. I don't believe that we do need kind of these indirect methods to bring the money to the city. We already have the funds available. We need to re-prioritize those funds to create good business sense and, and ask people to voluntarily, there are people, those who are kind of going out of the way to help the community at large. We don't need more government. We need good business sense so that we could bring more small business owners. As you all know, that most of the tax money comes from small business owners, not from big corporation, and big corporation are the only one who could pay for these P-bid funds and other funds, which poor people like us, they cannot create any more business because we have only limited resources.
Thank you. Vernon?
I agree. I don't think we should add any more burden on to any of our companies or any of our small businesses, so I would say let's, I'm at a loss. I'm sorry.
Okay. Terry?
Great. I have kind of seconded that emotion of that they could be very powerful and very good tools, but I think we also have to make sure they're not exclusionary, they're not overly burdening certain businesses. So as long as they're done equitably and we can get the businesses actually to agree on an equitable setup for them, towards where we're not hurting the smaller businesses and favoring larger businesses, we should pursue it more in those lines than kind of possibly setting up things where we're forcing small businesses to pay an additional tax, basically, that they can't afford. I feel kind of bad. I don't always take the minute. I guess I speak too tersely, or too, thank you.
Somebody else will take your time, I'm sure. Thank you.
So I feel that the T-bids and the P-bids are a, a good idea in theory, but I concur with some of the panel in terms of ensuring that we are not paying someone a penalty for, or causing them to incur a penalty for doing business. We have over 200 restaurants here. We have five, over 500 specialty shops in Concord, and we have 12 hotels. And we, it's great that we have the 12 hotels, but to fill those hotels, we have to partner with the businesses that are here, to draw others to fill the hotels. So we should be focusing on those businesses that are existing, that are viable and part of our community, and encouraging their business, and then that is going to bring the business and the tourism.
In the military, we used to use the acronym JAWS, Junk Acronyms, when speaking. P-bid, in case anyone here is not sure, is a Property-Based Business Improvement District, and of course, the T stands for Tourism. Redevelopment was spent, spending $230,000 to make sure that we could promote our downtown. During that time, we increased a number of businesses. We don't have that now. If you were to have a P-bid in the downtown area, you could generate $380,000 to make sure that not only would our, our downtown survive, it would grow, because we could attract new businesses. I think that's important. I think the, the business of running the city requires funds, and you get those when businesses are attracted. I think a P-bid will attract businesses. It's, it's the only way that I know of, and I, I think we should do everything we can to support our downtown community. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol?
Thanks, Dan, for enlightening me a little on that subject, but can you repeat the question?
Yes. Where do you-
Please.
Where do you stand on the use of Tourism Business Improvement District and Property Business Improvement District, and why?
Okay. Being I didn't study this subject very much, but just off the top, I feel that Concord, this is probably not hitting it on the head, but that the tourism that we could attract here with the pavilion, the water slide, you know, the theaters, the, the entertainment that goes on, if we could get that out there more in, in the tech world, all sorts of things, I don't really approve of any more tax raises or, for small businesses. I, I don't quite understand the subject that much, but I'll look into it.
All right, thank you.
When the property bid, excuse me, the property tax subject was brought up at the Totos Santos Business Association, I was present. And it is correct that the tax will bring in $380,000. However, when you net out their administrative costs, because they will hire an executive, their publicity, the donations that they will make towards the Police Department, and their other functions, there's $75,000 left for direct support of the concerts. If the property owners really want this, I will fully support them. I would also advise that they turn in their Chamber of Membership forms. I'm a small businessman. We need to take a look at what's being asked. The very first thing that should be said, when businesses come to you and say they want to be taxed, it means that local government has failed. We need to support the businesses. Their first direction should be not to tax themselves, but for where are our taxes going now? Thank you.
I would have to agree with Eddie that I am not in favor of continuing to tax our small businesses. They are struggling as it is, and I think that we have to be more creative and look at other alternatives. I think that the downtown Totos Santos is critical for drawing in more tourism and more people to come to our fair city, but I think that we have to be very careful in not trying to create more burden on the small businesses that are already existing and are already struggling, and that we need to look at the ways that we can, as a city, create the things that are already existing, and that means improving the Concord Pavilion, improving the water slides, doing things that are going to be more beneficial to bring tourism to our city and not, and not fail our community.
Great, thank you. And I think this one is going to be similar for you in response, but the next question for you Suzanne, is what would you do to differentiate Concord from surrounding communities and attracting shopping dollars, as well as improving the quality of life for its residents, particularly in light of tight budget constraints?
I'm going to ask you to read that one more time.
I will be happy to. What would you do to differentiate Concord from surrounding communities and attracting shopping dollars, as well as improving the quality of life for its residents, particularly in light of tight budget constraints?
Being a mother of three who have raised my kids here and gone to Clayton Valley High School, one of the wonderful things that I love about our city is that it is a family-first city. You can always depend on people being able to reach out to one another. Sports has always been so supportive and encouraging families to get involved, and when, when you come into the city of Concord and you see people who are riding their bikes, going to the dog park, participating in ways to make this community as good as it is and even better, I think that's the, that's what differentiates the city of Concord from other cities, is families come first.
The two parts of this is, first, we have to keep the Concord dollars in Concord. We have to make sure that our people here are going to our stores, not down to Walnut Creek. In line with that, we have a sales tax that is higher than Walnut Creek in our adjacent areas. It's called Measure Q. I would let that expire. That gives us, first, an opportunity to level the playing field on government interference in the market. Second, I support that we develop local shopping opportunities first to direct our own people, such as when the Farmers Market started up in, on Concord High School. I was a strong supporter and helped with the community to find a solution to keep it there. We need more of those. If we can change the style of our own people's shopping, so they can walk to things, it will keep those dollars here. Then we attract business from the other side, because people want to come to Concord downtown for events, they want to come to Concord for where they're visiting their friends, and they can walk from their friends' homes to other sites. So price, number one, and two, local community involvement and keep our dollars here.
Thank you.
I would, being the, the city of Concord's the, the heart of the county, I would emphasize the diversity that we have here for shopping. I would really try to emphasize the, the Sun Valley to compete with the Walnut Creek Stores. Encourage, encourage what's going on. I, I think Totos Santos Plaza has done nothing but, but grow with its projects down there, the, the Farm, Farmers Market and the Music and the extend, extending Farmers Markets that are going on. So I would continue to, to encourage all that, that we've been doing.
I think we need to ensure that we continue to have a safe city, and we do have a safe city. We should also work on collaborative marketing initiatives with Sun Valleys, Willows, Park and Shop, Clayton Valley Shopping Center, and auto dealerships. And I'm happy to say that one of the members here, the mayor of our city, has worked very hard in doing exactly that, and we're coming up with a, a business plan which I think will, will enhance that particular approach. And we can target office and R and D manufacturing business strategies. There are a lot of things that we can do, and the initiatives that we are working on, I think, are along these lines. Thank you.
In terms of distinguishing ourselves from other shopping areas, I, I think, I agree we need to do a better job. We need to highlight what currently exists. We are a very sprawled city, and quite often, individuals, I find in talking with them, travel off the freeway and go to their destination and travel straight out. So we need to have ways as a city to encourage those to park and walk, as Ed said, and have opportunities for them to spend more time. They should not be coming in and going to some point, some of the businesses individuals have talked about, such as going to the water park. We have huge signs around the Willow Shopping Center that everything is vacant. That doesn't encourage those dollars and staying in the city of Concord. It encourages them to go somewhere else, because they see a bunch of empty facilities, and not opportunities to stay in the area. You need to keep them here, to keep the dollars here. So we need to work together, a partnership between the city and the business owners to fill, find creative ways to fill this vacant space and to keep the dollars here in our city.
Well, there's an old saying, or kind of an old axiom for businesses, that people spend where they work. So obviously, the first thing is, we need more people working in the city. We need to get more money flowing in the city. So definitely working on bringing in those jobs. Like I said, we could start being the, kind of the East Bay biotech, light manufacturing, green manufacturing, capital. Further on that, it was just, I brought up Totos Santos. We're underutilizing that. So first, we need to utilize that more. We should be having some craft fairs, a lot of different things to bring more people in, especially that's so close to BART, it's easy for people to walk from other cities. My wife used to work in one Concord. Her client said they loved that, because they could take BART out here, walk to the business, and then get back on BART without having to drive. The second is make sure we create a second situation like Totos Santos on the Weapons Station, near the BART. We need another square, and we can have a downtown and an uptown, and bring people in that want to have destinations, parks, things to do, especially for children. Make, bring back to families first. Thank you.
Okay, the first thing I want to say is, why I was at a loss before, because I don't understand the-
understand the first time, anytime we need anything, right away, we want to go and tax the businesses of Concord. I don't believe we should do that at all. So that being said, one of the things I would say is back to the sports. Sports, these tournaments, if we can make a tournament in Concord a big deal, where the businesses get behind it, like I said, just 50 teams spring in, you know, you could like time zap by four, or time zap by 20, and then time zap by two. And you're talking, that's the type of population that comes in during that time. So that's a lot of people that the city's bringing in right there, and that's a lot of money that can be brought in. And we can do that right now by figuring out a tournament that the city can get behind and really push. And we don't have to wait for the big complex, but when that complex does come, that's going, like I said, that's going to bring in a lot of people. And that's something, like I said, that can be done right now.
You know, when I moved to the city of Concord 20-plus years ago from San Francisco, I was told by many friends from other parts of the San Francisco and Silicon Valley that, where are you going? And then I thought that, you know, this is my city, this is where my daughter was born, this is where I live. I need to bring something to the city in collaboration with the Interfaith Council of Contra Costa County. I started the Spring Festival in downtown Concord. I brought people from all over the California, not only from city of Concord. And with that, my friends bought, they invested in a lot of business here in the city of Concord. So these are the creative and subtle ways to bring more dollars, and I have seen people from Ragusa, Lafayette, Walnut Creek, being very jealous that they don't have a park like Totos Santos Park Plaza in their cities. So we need to focus more what we have and do in a way which is more subtle and creative, so that people feel at ease when they come to visit us, not feel scared and frightened that this place is something different.
So I think the very first thing that comes to mind, really, when we're talking about shopping dollars and quality of life, one big thing will stand out, and it is to make sure we're promoting public safety. If we have a safe place to shop, it draws shoppers in. If they feel comfortable going to the stores, going to shopping centers, that they're not going to have issues in the parking lots, and basically be, you know, a victim at their cars, that's something that resonates with everyone. And so that's something that, right off the bat, we need to continue to support our public safety, so that that element can be managed as best as we can, and to help give that perception that Concord is a safe place where people want to come and shop. The other thing is, is that as we go through, we need to continue to support things like our downtown. I have put on The Taste of Concord for the last three years. That's something that directly helps support the different businesses and the restaurants in our Totos Santos, but I think there's even more that we can do. We need to continue to make sure we support those downtown events, but also expand them. There are other areas where these can go into, the Clayton Valley Shopping Center, you know, the up-and-down Monument Boulevard, and Sun Valley Shopping Center. There are other things we can do, and we need to look for more creative ways to promote those businesses.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, this one, we'll start with you, and it's a two-part question. What do you, actually maybe a three-part, what do you believe should be addressed in the city budget, and how can it best be addressed in spending Measure Q funds? And when Measure Q funds are gone in four years, how do you plan to balance the budget?
Holy, that's a one-minute, or is that a dissertation?
Let's take it again.
Do we have that much time? Holy smokes! Okay. I'm just going to kind of hit on a few quick things, because I don't know if we have enough time. Number one, Measure Q. I think we're extremely fortunate, the voters did pass it. We're fortunate that we had that to be able to make up that budget gap this go-around, but I think that we still have to be very, very mindful in terms of the type of spending that we're going to do, in terms of some of the programs that we're going to take on. We still have to be very, very conservative in how we approach our budget moving into this next year. And we need to make sure we're very realistic with our modeling, because, you know, once those Measure Q funds, and I think the other thing too, is that once we start seeing, if property values can start going back up, and we're able to, you know, it's trying not to be as pessimistic as possible when we're dealing with our budget, but that's the reality. You have to be as pessimistic as possible when dealing with our budget to get underneath and make sure we have a realistic approach to what this looks like. And make sure that, you know, yes, we want to make sure we are supportive of our police, supportive of our city workers, supportive of our parks, supportive of making sure that we have the infrastructure we need to operate a good city, but we also have to make sure that we're realistic on what we can and cannot afford. And so it's making sure we're smart with our dollars.
You know, I serve on the Mayor Q Committee, and the money which it has brought, no doubt it has helped us keeping some core services in the city. No doubt it has made a little dent in our deficit management. But personally speaking, I would like to see these dollars to be spent, like with the health insurance for all the small business owners. If it is up to me, I would hire full-time doctors and nurses to provide 24/7 healthcare insurance to every city resident and all the senior residents of the city, so that nobody will go without having a health insurance. But it is not within the city limits, but I will try to do it within my own means, which I have done over the last 20 years here in the city, to provide mental health services to people those who need the most. So when this mayor is gone, we need to see how we spend our current budget. As I have said earlier, we need to re-prioritize our funding priorities, so that we don't spend money and through the cracks, like Eddie has mentioned about this P-bid money, which will go mainly to administrative costs rather than going directly to the businesses.
Right now, I believe that Measure Q is pretty much balancing our books, and I met with our city manager, I've seen the numbers, they have a pretty good plan on that when the Measure Q runs out, we should be balanced by then. I think so far, our city's been doing a good job of trying to get it balanced under some tough times as it is right now. So I think we should stay on that course. That being said, we still have city workers that are in negotiations, we have unfunded liabilities that I think we shouldn't have. You know, it's like having a credit card that, oh, we'll pay for this right now, but we'll pay for it down the road. We'll have that money. We may not have that money down the road. So I think those unfunded liabilities, we shouldn't have as many as we do have. And we've got to figure out a way to pay for them now and not think about down the road, oh, we'll have the money that we paid for. I don't believe we should be doing things like that. So like they said, I think the dollars we have right now, we should be really thinking about spending them well.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to read that one more time. That was a long one.
So the first question is, what do you believe in the city budget should be addressed? The next part of that is, in addressing anything in the city budget relative to Measure Q? Can't hear me? Can you hear me now? Oh, all of them. Maybe speak into the mic a little bit more? Thank you. How can Measure Q funds be best spent? And then when Measure Q funds run out in approximately four years, how would you balance the budget?
Okay, so something that needs addressed. I think one of the biggest things is the executive mentality that we've seen in our budgeting. We negotiate very high wages for our executives while our employees are making less than they made 10 years ago. We should be addressing their salaries first, not the executive salaries first. Quality of life is dependent upon that expendable income. How much more do you make than you have to make? We should be trying to work more with our employees and bring them at least back to where they make as much as they did 10 years ago. Second on the other one is, in the future, part of the problem we have here is housing issues. We have a lot of open stock in the city, and we're also renowned for nickel-and-diming homeowners. We make it very hard for people to do anything to their houses. One of the things we can do is make that more approachable to people, actually help them make improvements. We have a lot of old houses. My one was built in 1964. My neighbor's was built in the 50s. You know, so you have to have a huge permit that requires you reframing everything, just to go from single-pane to a double-pane windows. We need to revamp that, and that'll help bring up our tax base. Thank you.
On the issue of the city budget, I don't think we're on. On the issue of the city budget, I think the city has done a good job in some struggling economic times. One of the things that I hear from many small business owners is that, given the cutbacks that all cities have had to deal with, our city has continued to be a beautiful city and an attractive city. We've asked many of our city employees to do the job that three people used to do, which is not unusual also in the private sector. So we're asking individuals to do more with less, and I'm proud that we've sustained during this time and that we've kept the city budget fairly balanced. Thank you. And that going forward, the Measure Q funds should bring us to the point where we can see ourselves coming back as a city economically. But again, this is going to take a lot of partnership and an understanding that those funds are going to run out, and preparing now to be proactive in addressing that and ensuring that we're prepared for that down the line. And I think that means looking at our unfunded liabilities and making sure that we're prepared to make some cuts to those, so that we're not putting ourselves too far into the future in debt as a city.
I think we have an effectively balanced city budget. We're over in a couple of small areas. I think the surplus will take care of that. Obviously, Measure Q has been huge for the city. It generates $10 million a year. What we're planning on doing is not spending all of it, but stretching it out beyond the five-year limit of Measure Q, so that we have our 10-year reserve plan. What we really need, and there's a direct connection between the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Concord, and I'm glad that we're going to be reinvesting in our involvement with the Chamber of Commerce and other economic programs in the city. But what we need, I think, are the, to implement the 10 key initiatives, these are all geared to developing new revenue and giving us new sources, so that we can continue the budget that we have, we hope that even expand on that in the future. We need a long-term plan, and I think with our conquered, Destination Concord 2.0, we have it. Thank you.
Well, I think what Dan and Marnie and Tim have said, and I agree with, the Q money, I believe, is being spent wisely. I think the planning for when it runs out is being planned wisely. I really feel that what the city's doing is very good, and it's what has to be done now. Who knows what the future's going to be? It's hard to predict when it runs out, if, you know, it'll really hurt us if we haven't prepared properly for when that happens. But I think in negotiations with the staff, that everybody's in the same boat, and we all realize that. And I think if everybody has the attitude that we all have to help on some levels, that we're doing it, we're accomplishing it. So, thank you.
In addition to coming from the community side, I also come from the business side. Our goal in budgeting is not to balance. The goal is to have a surplus. That's the attitude we should take, number one. Number two, our problems really derive from a lot of issues. Pension reform is needed. We need to get rid of our unfunded liabilities. I've mentioned that we need to end the city council's special five-year medical program that could cost us millions. On the Measure Q, on the way we spend it, if you look at the actual wording of Measure Q, it said that this money was supposed to fight gangs, provide for senior nutrition meal, and go for youth services. We need to return that money to what it was supposed to be doing. I have not seen an increase in the senior funding. I've seen it come from the community block grants, but not from Measure Q. I have seen gangs being talked about, but we could use that money to double the graffiti fighting, so that we make it clear that the only tag that's in this city is a clean wall and that we own this city. We can take care of our youths, which will help prevent the crime. That's where the Measure Q money should be using. Instead, it's being funneled into the general fund, and we're losing sight of specifically where it's going. We need to redirect Measure Q to exactly where it is. We need to get our attitude back in line with trying to develop surpluses, and we need to control our pensions and our unfunded liabilities. Thank you.
I would definitely say that Measure Q has been a great help for our city's funding issues, and I want to congratulate our city council for doing an extraordinary job in trying to take care of the needs of our budget. But my concern is that we really need to be thinking outside of the box. We continue to say, well, I hope things will get better, I hope my property taxes will be less. It's the kind of thing where we're putting everything for the future when we don't know for sure. I think we need to be here and now, we need to be generating ideas that will be creative. And one of the things that I've promoted and asked is that we would have the Adaptive Learning Center, which I am on the board, which is for autism, that we're trying to reach out to bring more of the students here to learn skills and to be creative in developing that school program. I've also asked teachers about the problems that are going on in their schools, and we need to have more interns coming to work with our teachers and support them, and funnel sort of like internships in our businesses, and have these students work side by side, being mentored as young people, and that, you know, they would partner with our state school districts here, Cal State Hayward, and we would try to have them have mentoring done in the small businesses where they get student salaries. Contra Costa has student salaries within our departments, and we need to be pulling our youth back into the workforce and creating opportunities for them, so that we don't have this big glut of aging working class with all these young people wanting to work and they have no jobs. We need to be thinking outside of the box, not be dependent on government, not be dependent on the federal government rescuing us because we need their money. We have what it takes right here in our city with the good people that are already living here.
Suzanne, okay. Thank you. No, I know, you're passionate.
I do.
This next question and statement comes from an audience member, and it begins with a statement. Suzanne, you are to start in answering this question. Many residents and businesses of Monument Community with a population of 35,000 to 40,000 have the perception that the city council does not know their community well, nor does it care about it as much as other areas. What do you believe are the two greatest needs in the Monument community, and how would you address them?
I think one of the needs of the Monument community is to create a safe place to come. And I think that Totos Santos has always been reaching out to the Monument corridor, bringing people together for entertainment and for creating community. I happen to know that they started a new church that is down near Monument, and a lot of the young people are reaching out to the community, doing barbecues and inviting people who are isolated and don't know other people. And because I think that's a vital piece of community, is connecting with those people through churches or religious organizations. The other part, I think, about Monument is safety. I hear it all the time, that people are concerned about safety, and since we unfortunately had to close the hub of the police unit that was down there, I think that's another thing that we need to really look at, is putting that back in place to make sure that that Monument corridor is a safe place and that people feel good about being there.
I live in the Monument. I shop in the Monument. I do community work in the Monument. What the Monument needs is a reattachment to the power of the city, and they have to believe that the city and the entire infrastructure, by that I mean the social and cultural infrastructure, is working with them. My election will go a lot of ways to solving that problem. My election will go a lot of ways to solving that problem. Of the specific things we need is, number one, we need code enforcement to concentrate on blight, not harassing businesses. We need to return our local substation and expand it so that it's also a community center. We need to have police out of their cars and on the street. We need the city to be there. And, as I said, I live there, I work there, and we can do this. And it's mostly an attitude of showing up and being there to the end, such as when we recently had a Detroit Avenue walk-along to correct Detroit Avenue. I stayed, I went with them, we fixed it, and I sat through the entire duration. That's the involvement we need. Thank you.
I agree with Eddie. I was raised in that area, a little outside of it. I've watched it grow, I've watched it multiply. I've watched the services that the county gives, I've watched the services the city I feel that there are a lot of services that they get that are offered down there through the Monument. I know the support that they receive is a lot, you know, it's not a lot, but they do get, if they come forward and have needs, they're listened to. I think with the loss of Michael Chavez, it hurt what was going forward down there. But I agree with Eddie. You know, there's things we can do.
There's no question that the Monument Corridor has special needs. We have other areas in the city that also has special needs. Right now, the City of Concord is working with the people in the Monument Corridor. We are supporting programs there, we're doing what we can, and we'll continue to do everything we can to upgrade that area and other areas in the city that need help. It's unfortunate that there are situations like this, but we're aware of it, we're working on it, we're going to continue to work on it, and it will be part of our program to make sure that we can enhance the business capabilities in that area.
So, I too live in the Monument Corridor, and that is why I'm running for city council. I do believe that there is a fragmented sense for those who live there. There's a lot of small business owners with some great businesses. There's a guy working his tail off every day with a wonderful Italian restaurant, Suppore, that is there. There's a guy that makes homemade donuts that are fabulous at 6:00 every morning, that he's there every morning rolling them out, that has some really creative creations. Unfortunately, this isn't seen. Individuals speed past down there, go very quickly down Monument, straight to Costco, and haul right back out of our city. There's opportunities to make it look like it's more part of our city. As Vernon said, we need more gateways. So, when you come into Concord, you don't even realize that you're coming out of Pleasant Hill into Concord. There's a little tiny, you know, wooden sign that's never lit up, that doesn't really emphasize there is a, you know, there's a pedestrian bridge there, that there's no light. And so, you come into a very dark situation, which I think, quite frankly, I don't feel unsafe. I do shop. I am there at Food Max at 10:00 at night grabbing things for the soccer game the next day. So, but I think we do need to make others feel more safe, better lighting, ways to encourage that it looks part of our city and then leads into the Toto Santos downtown area. There's a great opportunity there, and I'm glad to hear from Dan that the city is looking at this and trying to address it.
I know, that's one of the things I definitely often hear is that, well, you know, the city does everything for Toto Santos businesses, but they never do anything for us down in the Monument. Especially redevelopment funds went so much to providing events at Toto Santos instead of helping revitalize that area. We need to reverse that policy. We need to support Toto Santos, but we need to be making that so they feel more of a part of the city. Some of it goes back to safety. One of the huge issues is school resource officers. School problems are city problems. Truancy, you get drugs in the schools, you start getting the gangs in the schools, all of those lead to problems. When I did my ride-along, the officer actually had one of the guys that he knew that was now out of school, but he knew him when he went to high school at Diablo. And, you know, a great conversation with him of what's kind of going on, how's his brother, who's brother who was involved in gangs. You know, it's just building that community is a great way to start. Resource officers back on the school budget or state or city budget, not school budgets, is a good start. And also, light rail. On my Facebook page, somebody had posted or pointed out to me, there's a great plan, redevelopment plan for the Monument Corridor that's already out there. And let's start looking at putting a light rail right down there, making it a thorough fair that people will stop, get off the trams, and do all these things on. Get it in the plans, maybe we can get some stimulus funds to get it done. Thank you.
Okay, I do, I too do a lot of shopping on Monument, and to be honest with you, I don't really feel threatened when I go down Monument. Maybe they do have their problems, but like I said, my family shops there, my kids shop there. So, I think what it is, is the appearance, and it's back to that gateway, you know. I think if we made maybe a theme down there where the new buildings that are put up, they have to be put up in a certain way, so it gives, it gives its own identity where all of a sudden it becomes a place that people might, that come from outside of town do not feel this threatened. They come there and they look at it and go, "This is a part of Concord I really want to shop at for whatever theme we get going down there." But it should have, give it its own identity also. But like I said, maybe the police walking down there would make people feel more safe. I would probably feel more safe, but like I said, you know, if I came from out of town and seen police officers walking around there. So, I don't, you know, have, I'm not a designer, but I think we should hire somebody that took a good look at that and thought about what would make it look desirable for people coming out of town to say, "Hey, I want to stay here and shop here."
You know, we have quite a few cultural issues in the Monument Community Partnership, and we need to involve people, those who are, those who know about the culture being, I did start my life from Monument. I was renting apartment when I came on the corner of Monument, and I ran a boarding care home in that area. And since I came, I don't feel unsafe. I still shop at Food Max there, and my ride and walk every day to the shopping complex. And there are some cultural biases which are part of this thing. We need to pay attention to that. And being, it was many, many years ago when we started the Monument Community Partnership, and I served on the executive board of the Monument Community Partnership, and when we got involved, there was so much vibrancy in the system in that area. People were feeling so uplifted, and we need to get the community more involved and bring the cultural issues into consideration. If we don't bring the cultural issues in consideration, beautiful building won't help us. It is beautiful mind and beautiful people which help us.
I think the biggest thing for the Monument Community is to really make sure we do continue to connect them to the, and not make them feel like we've singled them out. And I think it's trying to do our best to manage that perception that there are these gigantic problems where realistically, over time, things have gotten better, but we need to share that with more and more people. There are a lot of good shopping opportunities, but I think the biggest thing is to continue to remember that we need to really make sure that public safety, work on public safety, work on trying to keep that area safe. People feel comfortable, again, doing the shopping. People will be more inclined to go and shop in those neighborhoods and to go to the new Walgreens that was just put in if they feel that it's, they're not going, they're not going to be at risk. The other thing, too, is to continue to encourage and do everything we can to look to have new buildings put in. It was so nice to see the Walgreens that was put in. We're going to have a new corner at Oak and Monument, Oak Grove and Monument Boulevard, new 7-Eleven that's going to go in. All those different pieces are going to help kind of uplift that area and just continue to see, you know, to encourage that building. And I like the idea behind a thematic approach to, you know, bringing in that feel that, hey, there are pieces, not just up and down Monument Boulevard, but also throughout the rest of the city that kind of makes things feel connected, that we're not just forgetting about, oh, that end of the city, because that's a very, very important piece to our city.
Great, thank you. We do have other questions from the audience, but to stay on schedule, we will present those questions to the candidates, and then we will post those on the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce's website, your responses to those questions so that we address everybody's concern. At this time, we would like to start with closing remarks, and Tim, we begin with you.
I'd like to thank all of you today. Concord is where my wife and I and my two children have called home for nearly the past 10 years. I've been honored to serve as vice chairman of the Planning Commission, vice chairman of the Concord Chamber of Commerce, and serve as president of the Kiwanis Club. Community service and civic involvement have always been a cornerstone to my life, and being a part of the community and taking an active role in what happens around me is how I can have a lasting impact, and it's a way that I can give back. Through servant leadership to my community with a balanced and positive approach to including others, listening to others, and collaborating is how I can accomplish great results. My experiences have allowed me to see so many different aspects of this community and how great Concord can be with the right leadership. Working with my fellow city council members, I will work towards my priorities of public safety, continue to find ways to keep the balanced budget, support our youth and our seniors, and work with our Economic Development Department to attract and retain businesses here in Concord, and improve the way the City of Concord provides its services to its citizens. I would be honored to earn your vote in November. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I also want to thank the chambers and all of you for coming and listening to us and giving us this opportunity to share what we have to offer to make our city more functional, beautiful, more uplifting for all people to come. As I said earlier, I would like to bring more private business and public participation. I would like to bring more businesses and manufacturing jobs to the City of Concord. I would like to bring different culture because we have to live in this country. My daughter was born here at Monte Diablo, and I have been living here for 20-plus years now, and this is the time to give back to the community, which has given us so much to be proud of, to be part of, to enjoy. So, I am asking all of you to look into this. Who are the people we want to bring to the city council who could serve us best from heart, not just for the rhetoric? So, I would request your vote and support on November 6th. Thank you.
I also want to thank you for letting us come today and talk to you guys. One thing that I want to make sure you guys know, I will listen to all sides of the stories when you guys come to us and ask us for things. As you can see, I don't have all the answers. I think our community has a lot of the answers out there for a lot of these things, and I think it's important for those people that sit on the council to listen to those people and not just go in, not just have prejudgment and already have a good idea how I'm going to fix it. I want to make sure that, I want to listen to you and listen to, hear how you want to fix things. So, because I know people have great ideas out there, and if people will stop and listen to them, we could get a lot accomplished and get it accomplished the right way.
Again, thank you definitely for having us here and letting us share our ideas, get you, let you guys get, all of you people get more, more knowledge about us. I'd like to kind of second what Vernon was saying there. One of my first lab jobs, the investigator there told me, it's kind of like, if you ever see anybody that says they have all the answers, they're either a liar or delusional. So, I don't have all the answers, but what I'm really, really good at is finding answers, whether it was troubleshooting aircraft or troubleshooting the brain, right? Helping create the new user manual for the brain. I think I bring that. One of the important things to remember here, too, is that diversity. We have five-member city council for a reason. We should have five sets of perspectives, more different backgrounds, more varied outlooks, more knowledge that gets brought in to make a larger entity. If you only have all of the same people that have kind of always followed the same thing, you get that very myopic view of what's going on in the city. Definitely, please visit my website at cremone.us or preferably my Facebook page, Cremone for Council. Thank you.
So, like the other candidates, I want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come today and talk about our thoughts and ideas for Concord. As a member of city council, it requires great leadership, and we have some great leaders up here. But what differentiates myself is, I, first heart, I love this city. I love Concord. I was born here, went to school here, raised children here, shop here. I'm here. I'm in the community. I'm visible. I'm available. It also takes brains and ingenuity. It means finding creative ways to deal with both cultural sense of indifference in a time where many small business owners and our young workforce are cynical about what our community can do for them. And so, you have to adapt and elicit great ideas, which takes courage, takes letting go of a sense of fear and willing to put things out there, which I am willing to do. And also, it takes a sense of going home and staying home, staying in Concord, having a sense of self-awareness. I thank you all for having me today, and I encourage you in November to elect Carter for Concord, Carter for city council. Thank you.
I want to thank the chamber for holding this forum and let you know that I've lived in Concord since 1955. I have enjoyed serving the city. Some people say, "Well, you know, at your advanced age, why do you want to serve?" I want to tell you that I feel productive being back on the council, and I've enjoyed the experience. My wife asked me why I was interested in running, and I told her that I'd rather wear out than rust out. And that's where I am. I know who I am, I'm my own person, and I care a lot about this city. I'm looking forward to serving four years, serving you. I ask for your support. I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I've been in this city since 1950. Anyhow, I've raised four kids, I've got five grandchildren. I'm free to give the city as much time as it needs. I love the politic ring. I've been sitting on it just volunteering, and I would love to step in and start bringing a feminine, a mother attitude. Not that you guys aren't doing a good job, but to have another woman sit on council would be, I think, very advantageous. I'm really compassionate about too much paperwork. When I ran 30 years ago, it was this much, and this time, just to run, it's this much. I don't, I don't think that's necessary, and if I, if you elect me, I'm really going to focus on trying to get rid of some of that and streamline it a little bit. Thank you very much.
My name is Ed Burssan, and I want your vote. I have a proven record of experience and leadership in this community in all areas, from being president at Friends at a Library, being a commissioner on the Community Service Commission, from gathering 9,000 pounds of fruit just this year for the food banks. With my wife, Carol, we've been married 38 years. We've raised two generations of kids here, and that is why we are dedicated to Concord, and the reason for I'm running is to make it a better city. A lot of that starts with leadership, and that's why I'm running for a leadership position. We need to lead by example. We have to respect the will of the voters. When they, there's an appointment that's open, you appoint the runner-up. We need to remove the unfunded liabilities of a special deal for the city council for its lifetime medical. This begins to set the tone. Then, on businesses, we need to move to get government added away so business can take care of itself. This is a pivotal election. We have an opportunity to make a change for Concord and for Concord's future, and I ask for your vote. You can reach me on my YouTube channel, you can reach me by edbursan.com, and I look forward to hearing your questions and gaining more support from all of you. Thank you.
Again, my name is Suzanne Davis-Lucey, and working for Contra Costa County Health Services as a deputy conservator, I do a lot of investigations for seniors and for those who are most vulnerable. I feel that since my first job was being a Camp Concord counselor, that that... I feel that since my first job was being a Camp Concord counselor, that that was the first experience I ever learned about how to be involved with kids and involved with community, and I'm indebted to the City of Concord for that opportunity many, many years ago. But today, I'm coming to all of you saying, "I have a heart for Concord and for the direction that it takes, and I would like your vote to be a part of that planning, a part of that progress." And I have to say, I am very impressed with all of my other co-candidates. So you're going to have a very tough job making a decision, but it has been an honor to be here with the chamber. I want to thank you again for having all of us and for you, Ken, being our moderator. And I look forward to this next coming month and looking forward to any other way I can serve the City of Concord. Thank you very much. Bye now.
Great, thank you. At this point, it's with great honor that I get to acknowledge the Concord Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event and bringing this all together. I would like to thank Tesoro Golden Eagle Refinery for sponsoring the event, and our members in the audience for providing the interest that you have given this event as well as your questions. And I would certainly like to thank all of our candidates for your professionalism and engagement in discussing the topics that are relevant and that are concerning our community of Concord. Thank you. Give them a round of applause, please. You will be able to find more information about this event on the Concord Chambers website at wwwconcordchamber.com. We will have a link to today's forum and post those questions once we receive answers from our candidates. Replay of this morning's event will be found on Channel 29 for Astound customers and Channel 28 for Comcast customers. We hope that you walk away with a little bit more information and understanding of the candidates that are in front of you so that you can make an informed decision when it comes to voting in November. And lest we say it again, go out there and vote. Thank you.[1779.21]